So Juliana, how are you doing today?
I'm doing good, Kobe. How are you? This is as we're recording this, this is the morning after the very first 2020 presidential debate. How are you feeling?
Yeah, I'm coping with that a little bit right now. So what's in the back pocket today, Juliana?
So today's episode is actually a little bit different. We are going to be joined by a special guest who is running for office in the city of Baltimore.
Just a quick disclaimer before we jump in. I've donated about $20 to Franca's campaign. And just last week I started phone banking, so I'm not necessarily an unbiased observer here.
But on the opposite end of the spectrum, I am pretty unbiased because I, going into this, have not done too much research, but I did that intentionally because I want to get a feel from her, from what she speaks about. And also, I just think that gives our audience a balanced view when we're asking her questions.
Yeah, and I think that's the best approach to an interview like this. We have one person who knows something about it and one person who's learning about it. So we can kind of provide a little balance there.
I'm Juliana.
And I'm Kobe.
And let's jump in.
So we are happy to introduce Franca Mueller-Paz to the Back Pocket Report today. Franca is a teacher from Baltimore who is running for city council in Baltimore's 12th district as a Green Party candidate against the Democratic Party incumbent, Robert Stokes, Sr. Franca, how are you today?
I'm doing pretty good. Thank you guys so much for having me on.
Yeah, of course. We're happy to have you.
So since it's on the top of everybody's mind today, unfortunately, what did you think about the debate last night?
Yeah, so actually I was out with young people from Good Kids Mad City last night. We did a march for Breonna Taylor and for Black Lives. And starting from Waverly in Baltimore to Hopkins campus and making a list of demands around changing to police infrastructure and funding. And so I need to catch up on the debate. I have not, and then I've had school today, so I haven't had a chance to to catch up. But I did see some of the highlights and it definitely, you know, I think it's just another reason again that we have to get, you know, Trump out of the office as quickly as possible and make sure that he doesn't continue to endanger further the well-being of American lives and especially our Black and Brown communities that are really, really suffering and working-class communities are really suffering under his, you know, leadership, if you can call it that.
Totally agree about that. And take your time on learning about that debate. I don't know if you want to hear about that right now.
Yeah, it was a rough one.
But so since you brought that up, we were actually going to ask this a little bit later on, but we'll ask it now. So you've expressed your support for the Black Lives Matter movement, and you've called for police to be defunded with money reallocated into programs to help the community. Can you explain a little bit about why the movement resonates with you so much? And why you think this is the right approach to Baltimore's crime problem?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, you know, I'm an educator. I've been teaching for 10 years. And I see in our city and really across American cities how a devaluing and defunding of education has really hurt our cities. And it hurts our young people. And so right now we have students that are going to schools where there's no air conditioning, where heat barely functions. I actually taught for three years, simultaneous years, where no heat worked in my classroom whatsoever. And kids would sit in my classroom. And this is not like a surprise occurrence for folks in Baltimore, where they have to be in your classroom with coats and gloves and hats on. And, you know, we do the best that we can as teachers trying to bring in space heaters and things like that for our kids. But and lead in the water, you know, students can't drink out of the fountains in their own schools. So this is, there's been a huge devaluing of public education. And when you don't even have those basic resources, the resources that we really need to uplift our students, give them the opportunities to be able to go into careers that you feel passionate about, you know, you're really slamming the door on that. So, you know, we have some really great career academies, but they're having to teach carpentry and other things and digital, you know, technology work without wood and without computers and without machines. And so students are graduating without the skills often that they need to be successful and without the exposure that would have really shown them things that they feel passionate about. And on top of that, you know, we're really undervaluing the importance of rec centers. Those are a really important place where students receive mentorship after school, where they build meaningful relationships with adults. Same goes for a lack of, in general, school counseling, according to the Kerwin Commission from the state, studying our, you know, education need and underfunding across the state of Maryland. In Baltimore, the ratio between counselors to students is one counselor for every 900 kids.
So that, oh my God.
So if you think, you know, if we're not even giving our counselors to do much more than complete paperwork with those kind of case loads. And so when we have students that aren't getting to learn in a dignified space, when we have students that aren't getting the emotional support that they need, when we know that a lot of our students experienced trauma growing up, when we don't give students the opportunity to learn about themselves and expand their passions, you know, after school and doing after-school programs through the, you know, public school system itself or through rec centers, we're really asking our young people to be successful with both hands tied behind their back. And so when we, when we have, you know, you know, violence that is being, you know, done by our young people or our young people are being involved in businesses and trades that we wish they weren't doing, that are allowing them survive from one day to the next, but are not fruitful for our communities, you know, that's a big deal. And so I think when we're talking about what can we do to reduce crime rates in the city, we have to invest in our youth. And to not do so is to continue to not really take the crime issue seriously, in my opinion. And I'll just add one more piece to that, which is the wages in the city. We had the opportunity for a $15 minimum wage. There was majority support for that in council. But then the incumbent that currently sits in the seat did not support a veto override when the mayor vetoed it. And so we could have had $15 minimum wage in two years. We don't. And now we have to wait for the state's bill, which cuts out young people. So, you know, I, as a 14-year-old, started working and I started working as a waitress when I was 14. I know a lot of our kids in high school and even as young as, you know, seventh, eighth graders are working for their families, helping to pay bills at home. I wish it wasn't that way, but that's what it is. That's the reality that we live in. And we have young people that are raising families. We should not be cutting them out of wages. And so by not really giving people the, you know, family sustaining wages that they need, we're also then again pushing them into a direction that's like, well, you know, I have to solve this problem somehow. I have to put food on the table somehow. And until we really get meaningful increases in wages with a rise for inflation, so we don't have to fight this battle every five years, this is going to continue to be a problem. And we're going to continue to have people committing crimes because, you know, that's just the options in the hand they've been dealt. And I really think those are two big places that we could be investing in. And there's many others. Those are just two examples of how we could significantly reduce crime in the city over the long term and having a generational change in crime rates. But we have to make those investments into our Black and Brown community.
I love the way that you connect those issues together. Because I think a lot of the times we often think of criminal justice in one box, economics in one box, but you kind of like weave it together in the way that I think is necessary to actually fix all of those problems.
And to get people to really understand how they are actually connected. They're not just like, it's all a big cycle of keeping kind of like, for lack of better words, the bad things bad. And I kind of want to circle back to what you were specifically talking about, education and how a lot of students don't have what they need. I grew up in, I'm from New York, just for context. And I grew up in a school district where, when I was in fifth grade, they implemented that every single student from fifth grade to 12th grade received a Mac laptop. We did not own that laptop, but it was used in every single one of our classes. We took it home. We learned about the technology from fifth grade on. In fifth grade, I was what, like nine or 10 years old? And then 15 minutes away in a different town where we used to take the train, where we went and got coffee, where as we got older, we started to go out in. They, their buildings were crumbling. They couldn't take care of their fields. They weren't having, they didn't have great textbooks. And this is literally 15 minutes away in the same, like we would play them in sports. Like that's how close it was. And I think I just want to give you more of an opportunity to talk about what you've already done in terms of education in Baltimore, because I know that you've done a lot. So if you'd like to speak to some of the things that you have already accomplished there, that'd be great.
Yeah, absolutely. And that, you know, and that story that you tell, and do you prefer Juliana or Juliana?
Juliana.
Juliana. So Juliana, yeah, you know, that repeats itself all over. And I grew up in a really similar circumstance. I lived in Patterson, New Jersey, which is like a miniature Baltimore. It was a factory town where almost all the factories had pulled out. And the last remaining factory that was there actually burned down a couple of years ago. And these were the same concerns that my parents had. Like, how am I going to send her to these schools that have no resources? How am I going to, you know, have her walk home and back at home from school in places where there's issues of violence and things like that, which again are all really interrelated? And so my parents had to make a huge, huge sacrifice just to move us a few miles away so I could go to a public school system that would have the kind of resources that you're talking about. But it was a huge sacrifice for our family. It meant that, you know, my father and mother would pick up double shifts. I would barely see my father growing up. Like he would go to work before I woke up. And by the time I was asleep, he was still working. And so that's often the situation and circumstances that families are forced to go through, which is that like, you know, well, we're just going to sacrifice everything for our kids so they can have a chance to get the resources that really they should have a right to. And I would say that at this point, you know, the MacBooks is a great example. If you're participating in 21st century learning, like you need a computer and you need internet access. You cannot effectively do those things if you don't have, if either one of those things is missing. And that's been a big fight that we've been fighting in Baltimore. From the moment that the pandemic started, we knew that this was going to be a huge crisis because in Baltimore, one in every two Black and Brown families don't have access to stable broadband internet. And so this meant that if we didn't do something to solve this problem, we were effectively going to deny education to our Black and Brown kids in the city. And so we started lobbying at City Hall, myself organizing with students, organizing with other educators. And we were able to win $3 million towards closing the digital divide. A lot of that went towards the school district being able to purchase more devices. And since then, we've really turned our attention and our efforts towards Comcast because they are the great gatekeepers of the internet in the city. They have a sweetheart deal, which is a 10-year franchise agreement where they get to use our, our cable infrastructure. So if our cable infrastructure, our city owns it, which is actually really special on that we own that infrastructure, but Comcast gets almost exclusive access to using it. And so they control the lion's share of clients for internet in the city. And despite that, despite all the money that they're making off our city and during this pandemic, they are actually having a, I want to say it's a 13-year high in new customers. So they broke records for how much money they were able to make in the second quarter, which is during COVID, in new paying customers, which by the way, is about like 300,000 some odd customers. That does not even include their Internet Essentials customers for low-income residents that like they don't pay the first two months, but then afterwards you're on the hook to pay $10 a month. That expanded by 600,000. So they're about to like triple. You know how many, how all the amount of customers that they have. And yet, despite the profits, despite the control that they have in the city, they still dropped, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollar invoice on Baltimore City Schools, saying, if you don't want us to unplug the internet on your kids that are using Internet Essentials, you need to pay up. Which to me, you know, is just crazy that they're shaking down our school system like this. And they have seen a total opportunity. They're trying to pull this everywhere. They want to do this in Chicago. They want to do this in Philly. They want to do this in Atlanta. And they see that our school systems, our Black and Brown school systems, they are in a corner where they're like, man, if we don't, if we don't pay this check, our kids aren't going to be educated. And they are just manipulating this, you know, power imbalance to make as many profits as possible. And I think it's really, you know, pretty despicable. And so we've been trying to push on them. We did a national press conference last week, speaking alongside Councilman Z Cohen from District One, Councilwoman in Philadelphia Helen Gim, bringing in activists and advocates from Detroit, from Baton Rouge, from Denver, really. And I just want to say like led by young people from Baltimore, led by SOMO, Students Organizing Multicultural Open Society, which is a group of kids that started organizing in my classroom with the help of other Latinx colleagues that were at my school back in 2014. But totally, you know, championed by them, doing national organizing work. So I hope they do the right thing. I also don't want to wait around for them to do that. I don't want to be, you know, groveling for this multinational, multi-billion dollar company to have a soul. So I think, you know, I think what you're transitioning towards is the idea of municipal internet. And we can do it. We own our cable infrastructure. We can absolutely do it. We just have to make it a priority. And I think if we want to be a 21st century city with a 21st century economy, we really have no choice.
Can you speak a little bit to the connection between Comcast and the Democratic Party? And perhaps even Robert Stokes himself, just so we can see how this connects together?
Yeah, well Comcast has a PAC. So they give money to candidates. And if you look at Baltimore City Hall, you will see that there are many candidates that have taken money from Comcast PAC. And this is true not just in our city, in our city hall and city council. It's true in Annapolis. And these are, you know, Democrats that are taking that money. You can see a video of Councilman Stokes and, you know, pumping up the partnership with Comcast on their website. So, you know, they seem to have a positive relationship. But it, you know, I think this is really problematic when we have this company putting in tons of money towards lobbying our legislators, tons of money towards putting direct money into, you know, their electoral campaigns. And so that's how we get these 10-year deals. Then we then have to, you know, deal with, we can't even question for that long. And I will say this, they signed that agreement in 2016. And a couple of weeks ago, when we forced Comcast to the table for a youth and education hearing, that was the first time they have had to stand for a hearing since they got that signed in 2016. And it's just unbelievable, especially given that there is certainly digital redlining that's taking place in the city. There are blocks and neighborhoods, yeah, that do not get full access. So you can live on certain blocks and there is no Comcast service for you. And, you know, Comcast does not see it as a priority to, you know, fill in the gaps and provide the technological infrastructure to provide that service. And surprise, surprise, you can look at a map of 1930s redlining and you can look at a map of internet access in our city and you will see a very similar map. And so, you know, this is the legacy of racial segregation that continues to really wreak havoc on our city through to today.
Wow, couldn't have said it better myself.
So something about our show that I think is kind of unique is that Kobe is much more well-versed in politics than I am. I'm very new to the scene.
Don't say that.
You studied it. I didn't.
Neither did I. You don't need to.
But so that's, that's kind of our thing is that like I'm still learning, very much so. And so for other people in our audience who may also still be learning, can you just kind of describe what it means to be a member of city council and kind of what those duties entail?
Yeah. So as far as like the control and responsibilities that a city council person does, a lot of it is very local. A lot of the time that you spend has to do with constituent services. So raising up the needs around potholes, trash, issues that are happening within the community. And then you can also vote on larger bills that have to do with, you know, wages being for one, certain, you know, things that can have a citywide impact. You can pull money out of the budget or vote against funding into certain things. So there are certainly parts of my platform, you know, and community public safety is a big part of that because, you know, Baltimore doesn't have, well, it doesn't have control of their police, doesn't have direct control of their schools, doesn't have direct control of their public transportation, doesn't even really have control of their zoos.
Is that the state of Maryland that controls those things?
Yes, yes. And, you know, and that's again, part of this racial legacy where it's like, you know, we're not going to trust, you know, the opinion of lawmakers in Annapolis being like, we're not going to trust a majority Black city to do their own politics, which is tremendously racist and hugely problematic. And we need to fight to get it back. That said, just because those are issues that I don't necessarily get a vote on, it doesn't mean that I can't make a lot of noise about it. And it doesn't mean that I, as an organizer, and I've been organizing since, in Baltimore since 2006, got started with Casa de Maryland. It does not mean that you can't help put pressure and that you can't help, you know, these state lawmakers feel the urgency that they need to, that your community is feeling. I think that's, that's something that we hear a lot from legislators, like as organizing, like, oh, you know, like these things move slow. You've got to wait. It takes time. But when they want to really get something through, they get something through. And it's important that we do the organizing of people, building those relationships, connecting communities, and then being able to mobilize efforts to really show that like, no, like this is an urgent need and we're going to come out and we're going to make our way out to Annapolis and we're going to, you know, put pressure where pressure is needed. And that's something that I strongly believe is a responsibility of our local city council legislators, that they have a responsibility to use that megaphone, raise it up to the voices of the community so they can, you know, speak on the issues that are directly impacting them and do the organizing work to make sure that when big things are happening in Annapolis, you're not showing up a couple of times, you're really coming out and you're making your presence known and you're really, you know, trying to drive a large people organized effort to get this pressure on Annapolis to make the changes that we need as a city.
I love the way that you frame that as like, even though a lot of people often think of it as these things are completely out of your control, so why worry about it? You know, if you want to push for it instead, because, you know, you can't get it unless you try. And so on a similar note, you know, we'll backtrack a little bit on this. So why did you decide to run in the first place? And why did you decide to run as a Green Party candidate?
Yeah, so I, I, like Juliana, did not study politics. I did not think I was going to go into or pursue a political position that was not something that was on my radar. But as an activist and as an organizer, I was increasingly becoming frustrated, really wanting to have a champion in City Hall, especially because, you know, as someone that's been working a lot around education, around education funding, around fair access to educational opportunity in our city, around digital divide, I really felt that, you know, North Avenue is in this district. That's the central office for schools. So it makes a lot of sense for the person who is representing this district to really be a fighter on behalf of our students and parents and educators. But that has not been my experience and has not been what I've observed as an educational advocate in our city. And so, you know, we have been fighting a long time, not just around Kerwin, state funding to go to schools, as important as that is, but, you know, fighting to make sure that our city is going to make education more of a priority. Right now, we give 15% of our budget to education. The average in the rest of Maryland is 36% of a municipality's budget. You know, it's a huge difference. And so not seeing that support and not seeing that effort became, frankly, became really frustrating. And so I started to be asked by community members to consider running for this seat. I brought this idea to my student organizers who would be the most affected. Because if I win, it does mean that I'm not in my classroom anymore. My classroom isn't an organizing space before classes start, during lunch and after school. And so it was really important for me to hear what my students had to say. And they were super excited and, and felt that it's what they needed, that they had been really fighting and we had been fighting so hard from the outside, but that we really needed an ally on the inside. And so they thought like strategically, it was something that was really important. I then went to my union brothers and sisters at the BTU, the Baltimore Teachers Union, to kind of get their feedback and what they thought. And they were, you know, super supportive about me pursuing this. And so that's how, you know, I ultimately decided. And just to tap really quickly into, you know, women and women of color being in politics, I think a lot of women don't grow up feeling like they're, you know, political enough or feeling like they have enough of that knowledge or feeling like they had, you know, got the education experience that they needed or did the internships or, you know, whatever they needed to get into politics. And that is what I've heard over and over and over again from women who have been elected into office is that it wasn't that they had this master plan that they were going to run for office. It's that their community really reached out to them and supported them and encouraged them to run. And so I think it's really important for women of color to really think and believe in themselves and to, you know, listen to your community because we really need more, more of us, more women of color to be in office, to be representing the experiences that we've had and that our communities have had and make sure that they're getting a voice in the, you know, at the decision-making table. Oh, and you asked about Green Party. So, yeah, so why run with the Green Party? I really respect the Green Party. I respect the, you know, ethics and morals of the Green Party a great deal. They very much center, you know, racial justice, social justice, economic justice within their platforms. And that's something that just really resonated with me. And also their fundraising model, which is that no corporate money, no corporate PAC money. This is, these are supposed to be campaigns run and led by the people. And so that felt like a party that I could really, you know, feel good about running with and felt really at home with. And so, you know, yeah, it's been an honor to be a Green and to get support from Greens, you know, not just in Baltimore and Maryland, but, you know, get all this support from Greens across the country. It's been really wonderful.
On a really similar note, so one of the things I've personally most appreciated about your campaign is that you've been able to bring together a coalition of people from all sorts of different backgrounds. And so you've been endorsed by Baltimore City Democratic Socialists of America, the Baltimore Chapter of Our Revolution, Michaela Wilks, who ran for Congress against Steny Hoyer in Maryland, even the Sierra Club and the local AFL-CIO, which, you know, I don't think they ever really endorse third-party candidates. And so why do you think your message has been so appealing to so many people? And was this a purposeful effort on your part?
Yeah, I think, you know, the kids always say I'm doing too much all the time. When I finish my school day, I organize with young people, usually, you know, from the time school ends to about 5:00 or 6:00 o'clock. From then I go and I organize with my community. I'm actually one of the elected steering committee members of our local DSA. But I've just, you know, tried to really, you know, support causes that I thought were important. So that's included Casa de Maryland, Fights Around Fight For 15, the work that the DSA has been doing, supporting a Maryland Renew Deal with the Green Party, working and really supporting the fight of our union within the BTU. And so, you know, this is work that I've been doing for a long time that I've, you know, really felt, you know, privileged to be a part of these incredible organizing communities. And so I'm just really glad that when I asked for them to, you know, have my back, that, you know, they felt that my, my work that I've done speaks for what I want to do in the future and that they've been willing to support. And so, and it's been crazy, like we got, you know, unanimous support from Sunrise, from Sunrise Baltimore, unanimous support from Progressive Maryland. We not only got the endorsement of the Metro AFL-CIO, but it's a really tough endorsement to get. There's like three gatekeeping moments, right? You've got to get their Electoral Committee, then you've got to get their Executive Committee, and then it goes to the floor of the membership. And at each one of those steps, like you need 2/3 of the vote to secure a nomination. And, you know, there's been a bunch of really great politicians that had majorities that couldn't get past that 2/3 threshold. And we got 85% of the vote to support us. So it was just amazing and I was so excited to feel that. And my dad's a construction worker and so he's been really hype about, you know, me getting support from the me getting support from the carpenters union and stuff like that. So he's been, yeah, he was so excited when we, when we pulled off the, the Metro AFL-CIO and, you know, the 150,000 workers that they represent in the metro Baltimore area. And it is the first time, the first time they've supported since their inception, a third-party candidate. So we feel, you know, we feel really excited, but you know, I think it's about the work I've done and, yeah, yeah.
So it's, yeah, honestly, that's pretty incredible. So obviously, education and social justice are like pillars of what you stand for. But in terms of policy, if, if you were to win the election, what will be your biggest policy priorities on day one?
There's two pieces, I would say. So one is for, we need to, you know, clean up and reorganize how constituent services gets done in this district. There is a great model that comes from Z Cohen and his work in District One. You can see heat maps about how quickly things get handled in districts. And District One crushes it, like they do really well in getting back to their constituents, making sure they make noise about getting things done. And I think a large part of that is just, you know, organizational systems, making sure, you know, that we're building in the infrastructure so that we are not just counting on the 311 system, but really able to also kind of uplift and put pressure from our end as a district office. So as far as like day-to-day things that affect voters, you know, in their immediate communities, that's a big lift that we need to do. That is, or honestly, really to me, low-hanging fruit of what we, we can accomplish to just really make lives better, easier for constituents and make sure that the work that needs to get done, it gets done. And then the second piece is that the big issue for me is what are we going to do about crime in the city? I have lost many students over my 10 years as a teacher. I'm really tired of going to the funerals of my students. And so I, I really, this is, this is hugely important. You know, it's heartbreaking what happens in our city every week, multiple times a week. And we need to do more to make sure that we're, we're taking care of, taking care of our city and taking the steps necessary to be on the path towards community-led public safety that respects the dignity of black lives and that also is making the investments into this community that can really pay off and bring down, you know, our city's crime and homicide rate. I, so that, that to me is just, it's a huge piece that I, yeah, that I want to handle with extreme urgency.
I love that that's one of your top priorities, because like, I've lived in Maryland my whole life and that's one of the like really negative stereotypes I think people have of Baltimore. Like it's, there's, it's a beautiful city. There's beautiful people there. But everybody just gets so caught up in the crime problem that they kind of can't even see past that. So it's really good that you're going after that first. So on a separate note, you raised nearly $50,000 between July 1st and August 18th for your first campaign finance filing. And your opponent, Democratic incumbent Robert Stokes, he raised like, I think, was it zero? Was it actually zero in the same amount of time? And so like, what do you credit your like massive fundraising haul to? Cause that's, you know, pretty unprecedented, I feel like, for third-party local candidates in Baltimore.
Yeah, yeah. We feel super excited. We actually hit 80,000 on Monday night, I want to say. So we are super, super excited. And it's interesting because when we started running this campaign, you know, folks were reaching out to us that have done more established campaigns and said, hey, you really need to hire this person or this person to do fundraising. They've got a great rolodex or, you know, stuff like that. And I was like, ah, I don't really think we want to do that. Like I don't really, that's not what this campaign is about. And, and then like, oh, you really, really, really have to reach out to these people. They're the big donors in Baltimore. You need to call them individually. And I said, you know, that's not really what I want to do. You know, I, you know, I, I want to be, this needs to be something that's led by working-class people and, and I don't really want to spend a lot of time on the phone with, you know, that, you know, like that, that with those lists. Like that just wasn't something that made me, that didn't feel right. It didn't sit right. And it wasn't how I wanted to do things. And so we just, you know, we really made everybody that's involved in the campaign, volunteering with the campaign, feel like the only way we're going to raise this money to compete with someone that takes money from the FOP, you know, the police union, that takes money from developers and corporations. The only way we're going to do it is if we're all working fundraising for this campaign. And I said, and if you individually, like you can only give five, $15, that's fine. But you need to talk to the people you know, talk to the people, everybody you know in the district, everybody you know in Baltimore, everybody you know in Maryland. Talk to people who live outside the state. Talk to everybody saying that if we can get progressives wins here in Baltimore, we can set the standard to get progressive wins for other folks and support that work in other parts of Maryland and we can support that work across the country. So, and that is what we did. And we had folks, you know, just really, really working their personal communities. And, and that's why it's been so great. I mean, there are so many amazing organizers that are a part of this campaign that just, you know, they know how to, you know, they, these are relationships they've built for a long time. So when they say, hey, I believe in, in Franca's campaign, people are like, alright, yeah. Like I believe in you. I believe in Franca. Let's do this, you know? And so we, I believe, have hit over 1,200 donors, not donations, donors to the campaign, which is extraordinarily high. And yeah, and it, and it feels great, you know, we're, we're not, we're not beholden to any, you know, like specific interest or, or, you know, kind of stuff in Baltimore. So we feel really good and, and really feel like we're leading a campaign that's led and funded by the people, which is what we always wanted.
Hell yeah.
How are you on time, Franca?
I do, speaking of organizing, need to help power a Baltimore Teachers Union action that's taking place at 6:00 PM tonight, today being, you know, the, I don't know, is it okay if I drop a date? This is going to air after. So, you know, this will have been on Wednesday, the 30th. It's a national day of action and we're, we're, you know, really pushing for safe reopening.
We do just have one last question for you before you go. We like to end our segments, or not our segments, our episodes with our Pocket Full of Sunshine episode, where we like to share any little bit of like positive, happy news, because obviously the news recently has been pretty depressing. So we like to end on a positive note. So if you have any story, local, national, international, any positive, happy story that you'd like to share, we'd love to hear it.
Yeah, yeah. I would just say that, you know, this year, and I mean, I don't know, since, since really starting my career as a teacher, but this year, man, like young people, they just got it going on. They know what they need to do. They're hungry for it. They're ready to work hard. They know how to organize, like sit in a youth-led organizing meeting and stuff gets done so fast. And, and they really have that sense of urgency that's just burning around. We need to get this stuff done and we can't wait till tomorrow because we know what one more day means if we don't change these things. So, you know, last night I was with the youth from Good Kids Mad City, also with organizers from The Youth. And, you know, we're, we're in good hands. Like these guys know what they're doing. They know what they want. They know how to fight for it. Same goes with the work that I've seen from SOMO, Students Organizing a Multicultural Open Society, Baltimore Algebra Project, always doing the incredible work and really bringing in and training youth organizers and making sure that young people know the power that they have, know the power of their experiences, of their lives. And so I, every time I see an action run by young people, I just feel like a huge sigh of relief, which is, you know, one, I'm so sorry about the world we have handed to you and how bad we messed it up. But, you know, if anyone can save us from the brink, it's you guys. And, and that really, you know, that makes me feel so good. And so please, for folks that are listening, you know, follow these young people, come out to their actions, donate if you have the ability to. So please check out The Youth, you know, on Instagram and on, on social media. Good Kids Mad City Be More, SOMO City Nights, they are Baltimore Algebra Project. They're doing great, great work and, you know, we're, we're really lucky to have such incredible young organizers in this city. And I'm excited for, for all the work that they're doing and all the work they're going to continue to do to really improve the lives of, of people here in Baltimore.
Wow. So this is our third episode, I think. And I think that might've been the most inspiring Pocket Full of Sunshine we've heard yet. So thank you.
Absolutely.
All right. Well, it's been nice interviewing you today, Franca. I'm so inspired by your campaign. I will try to phone bank more. Haven't done it enough, admittedly. But thank you so much for joining us for our first interview today and good luck.
Thank you. And if you want to join Kobe, send in texts, making calls. Hopefully Juliana, we can get you on there too. Go to FrancaForThePeople.com, click on volunteer and we'll get you set up. The only way we are going to win this thing in November is if it's all hands on deck, all of us getting out to the community, making sure they know about this race. When we talk to people in the community and they, they hear about us and they learn what we're doing, it is, there, there's so much support. There is so much excitement, but we got to make sure that people know. And we got to make sure that the campaign has a, has a personal touch and is building these relationships. And, you know, this work that we're doing, this organizing work that we're doing on the doors, on the phones, on the texts, is going to pay dividends when hopefully, you know, we win November 3rd and can continue the work. So please, please check out FrancaForThePeople.com. You can follow me on social media, @FrancaMuellerPasse, basically on any social media. And I'll look forward to having you guys join on, hop on the dialer.
I think, think that was a good way to end it. Wow.
Thank you so much for your time and everything that you are planning to do for Baltimore.
Well Kobe, thank you so much for the invite. Juliana, awesome to meet you. And yeah, looking forward to it. So
Good luck with that event you got to go to next. I have a lot of stuff I've been procrastinating today.
Always busy.
Yes. Alright, bye everybody.
See you later.
Bye. Alrighty, that is all we have for you guys today. If you enjoyed this podcast, make sure you give it a like. And if you want to hear more from us, make sure you subscribe to our channel. You can follow us on our other socia's by liking us on Facebook at Back Pocket Report, following us on Instagram at Back Pocket Report, and also on Twitter at BPR News Pod.
Next time you're looking for news, don't forget to check your back pocket.